Fifteen, I am going to call to order the joint meeting between the Gillum County Court and the local contract review board. And so for folks who are unfamiliar with the local contract review board, that actually is the same as the county courts. Those members are the same in both instances. So I am noting that Commissioner Watkins and Commissioner Shannon are here, which means we have a quorum of both the county court and of the local contract review board and our meeting, quote unquote jointly. So with that, we'll go into the first agenda item, which is 2.0, consider approval of joint resolution number R 2024-01, a joint resolution of the county court and local contract review board amending public contracting rules for Gillum County. So commissioners, back in February of 2023 was the last time that we updated our public contracting rules, which basically, if you're not familiar, the attorney general has sort of modeled public contracting rules based on state statute. In order to opt out of those and to create procurement policies that maybe fit a little bit better with our size and needs, we have to go through this process of formally adopting with the with the local contract review board. And so we did that process in February of 2023. Of course, then the legislature met last year, made some updates to the statute. And so our legal counsel, who helps us out with procurement matters, Carrie Connolly, drafted and sent out revised revisions to make sure that our internal policies are staying compliant with state law. So just briefly, I'm summarizing, this came actually came out of a letter from her. But basically, it's it's pretty minor changes. Specifically, there's an increase in the small procurement direct award for goods and services and public improvements that goes up from 10,000 to 25,000, which is helpful, honestly, because especially the public improvement, 10,000 doesn't go very far in construction these days. So it's helpful to have that higher threshold before we have to collect and go through a formal bid process. And the intermediate procurement, which is when we go out and solicit up to three bids, that is moving from 150,000 to 250,000. And so that's the first one. Then there was a slight change in the language regarding preference for for disabled veterans. Previously, there was a preference for disabled veterans. The legislature expanded that so that it's a preference for all veterans. And so our policy reflects that change. And then it also allows us to provide a preference, 5% preference when we're scoring bids for for-profit businesses that benefit society or the environment. And and then it also, the the rules also require that demolition contracts and removal of hazardous wastes are considered public works under the procurement rules, which means that they're subject to prevailing wage laws, which is actually significant at the moment because of the asbestos abatement that we're doing in the courthouse or just completed, that needed to be done under prevailing wage, which it was. So that's kind of the quick summary. Like I said, it's not, these are not heavy lifting. It's not doing a lot of other changes. It's just basically making us compliant with some of the changes the legislature made last year that are going into effect here this year. Any questions?
No, I'm good.
Okay, so you'll you'll note in your in your packet that there is a very specific motion that includes a motion on behalf of the county court and on behalf of the local contract review board. We need to have both of those entities in the motion to be compliant with the law. So I would entertain a motion if one of you wants to make one.
I got it, Pat. I recommend the county court approve joint resolution number R 2024-01.
Next, next page, Leah.
Oh. Okay, sorry.
You got it.
Pat read it, I guess. I move to approve resolution number R 2024-01 as presented on behalf of the Gillum County and on behalf of the county's local contact contract review board.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded that we approved resolution number R 2024-01 as presented on behalf of Gillum County and on behalf of the county's local contract review board. Is there further discussion? All those in favor? I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so let me just move on. So that is all of the business related to the joint meeting. And so I will go ahead and adjourn the joint meeting. Everybody stay put, because we'll move right into the regular session. So I'm adjourned the joint meeting at 10:21 a.m. And then I'm going to go ahead and call to order the regular meeting of the county court. The chair notes again that there is a quorum present with myself, Commissioner Shannon and Commissioner Watkins. I'm going to skip the flag salute because it's awkward on Zoom to try to get everybody to do that. And we'll move into 2.0, which is additions and revisions to the agenda.
So we have a couple. Are you going to do the one?
Yeah, so the one that I will add is Sheriff Betancourt reached out regarding flooding that occurred in the sheriff's office in Arlington. And so asked for a discussion with the court about, I think, first, a temporary place for them to go and then figuring out long-term any changes. So I would add that under 2.0, the sheriff's office in Arlington.
You said 2.0, you mean like?
6.2, sorry. Got too much stuff going on. And then anything else?
I would like to add a discussion about broken water pipes in Gillum County in emergency situation and help help funding through Help Arlington. And I think it's the in Condon, it's the food pantry, believe. Don't know if there's issues in Condon. I know there's concerns in Arlington, so.
Anything else?
Nope.
Leah, you good?
Yep, I am.
Okay, so we're going to move into public comments and correspondence. I do not have any correspondence. So we're going to move right into public comments. For those who have dialed in on your phone, it's star six to unmute yourself. For those who are here on Zoom, if you wish to provide public comments, I would like you to either drop something in the chat, just a name, and I'll make sure I try to get to everybody. And or you can use the little icon where you raise your hand, and that will work, too. So whichever you prefer. Individuals wishing to address the county court may do so at this time. Speakers are asked to sign in via chat on the Zoom, or you can also raise your hand, wait to be recognized by the chair, give your name and limit comments to three minutes. I do, because I'm trying to run the Zoom and also the meeting, I am going to ask that all of the public comments come in during this section of the meeting so that I can help make sure that I'm muting and unmuting people and keeping the meeting moving. So with that, I will, the first, I think, maybe hand that I see up, did Jay Valdez, did you have your hand up? Or was that an inadvertent hand, maybe? Okay. So we will go to Denise Ball, who I think is in Arlington, the Arlington Crew. Denise, do you want to go ahead and unmute? And then if you can, if you want to go first, that's fine. And then maybe we'll just keep that one open for anyone else in that room that wants to come after you. And just please have everyone state your name, make sure you're close to the mic so the commissioners and I can hear you.
All right. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay.
Good morning. I have participated in over 20 various hiring committees. I look forward to participating in the county court administrator committee. I have reviewed the multiple hiring documents from the court packet and have comments or questions for the court prior to any action today. I will address my comments per each document or group of documents. So the first is the county administrator hiring procedures hiring committee. At the January 3 court meeting, this committee was discussed in great detail. The court and citizens had a healthy back and forth on the makeup and size of the committee. The consensus of the citizens in the court was a seven-person committee, three court members, four additional people from the county. Who those four people will be was to be determined, but I volunteered and it appeared there were no objections to my participation. Steve Allen, Times Journal, reported the hiring committee was to be seven people. I hope you will not go against the wishes of the people and change the committee makeup or number. So I recommend the language on page one, revised hiring committee. Remove the five hyphen before the seven and just leave it seven members. And remove the up to four additional individuals and leave just four individuals. Page two, step four, paragraph two, regarding the sentence, job-related, excuse me, job-related questions will be prepared in advance and asked of all applicants. Will members of the hiring committee be able to ask one or two of their own questions to each applicant? This has taken place on several of the hiring committees I have been on. Will any of the applicants be provided the questions in advance? I have heard this may have occurred in the past, and I am concerned about any appearance of impropriety. Page three, step five. Could you explain why county council is involved in the hiring process? I just have never experienced this before. Paragraph four. The letter of employment is subject to the county court's review and approval. Can you tell me what meeting date that will take place on per your county schedule? Appendix B, job announcement. Salary and benefits show a starting rate of 89,205 up to step F amount for a 10-year-plus employee of 106,435. Why would any new hire be given the maximum step F amount before serving one day on the job? There should be a probationary work period as well as a six-month salary review to ascertain that the new hire is capable of doing the job. Starting at the maximum pay rate appears wasteful to the Gillum County taxpayers. Job description. Title should read interim county administrator. The new county court in January 2025 may make different personnel decisions. Judge Farrar Campbell said during the January 3 meeting that she would not be replacing her executive secretary because it would not be fair to that person with the new judge taking office in January 2025, or words to that effect. It seems the same could be said regarding this position of county administrator. The posting needs to be totally honest and forthcoming regarding the tenuous length of service for this position. Remote work says hybrid eligible. Could you provide an example or a description and clarification on the meaning of that? Paragraph one. This is a non-represented position that serves at the pleasure of the court. Is this a non-contracted and at-will position? Example of duties, essential functions. The final bullet point says operates a motor vehicle in the performance of duties, maintains a current Oregon driver's license, and an acceptable driving record at all times. What duties will this position have that requires operation of a motor vehicle? People can travel from place to place, but do not have to be the driver. Requiring an Oregon driver's license prohibits an out-of-state person from being hired and commuting to work. A disabled person who can't drive would also be discriminated against with this requirement. It appears this could possibly open the court to a lawsuit, and a change in language or removal of the bullet point might be wise. And then the salary schedule. The county judge reduction, reduction in pay. It is presumptuous to change the pay for a new judge. The new judge will likely be full-time and reclaiming and performing all the duties of the judge position. Creating a part-time judge is not part of the hiring for an interim county administrator. The form projected budgetary impact of county administrator position that is included in the hiring packet and shows reduced judge salary for fiscal year 24, 25, and fiscal year 25, 26 should be labeled sample, not a working document. A judge who is leaving at the end of 2024 should not attempt to project budget numbers for a fiscal period she will not be serving in. In closing, I would ask that the county court take no action on item 5.2 of the agenda at this meeting. Further review, revisions, and clarification of these documents is needed. Thank you for your time.
Are there others in the room in Arlington who would also like to provide public comments?
Yes, Chris Patnau.
Go ahead, Chris.
Good morning. I apologize, I have a cold, so I may have to clear my throat. I have four points I just wanted to make about the process. Are you able to hear okay? Okay. Your financial projections appear to be incumbent future county courts. Therefore, the candidates for county judge and commissioner that we currently have or may have in the future should also be on the hiring committee. The second point. In fairness to candidate candidates for the administrator position, I suggest the position should be hired as an interim to meet this county court's needs. The next court may have different needs than this court. The candidates for county judge need answers. In fairness to both candidates or any future candidates, detailing your plan, just as you've detailed the administrator process in detail. The supporting documents do not mention duties or FTE. It seems we've missed a step, and that step would be setting up an objective, fair process to weigh if an administrator needs is needed or not, plus any other options that have been exercised by other Oregon counties, such as leaving the county judge in place and hiring an executive assistant, which could be done on a permanent or interim basis immediately. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else in the room in Arlington? Okay, I'll open it up to anybody else who is joining us via Zoom. Again, I want to remind folks that I am asking folks to do their comments during this public comment portion. So if folks have comments, now would be the time to do it on any of the items on the agenda. And you can either raise your hand or drop your name in the chat. Okay, folks, just a minute in case you have trouble finding either. And I am not seeing any. Oh, Jed, go ahead.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, my my item would pertain to the item added to the agenda for 6.2 for the sheriff's office. We've, Leah Shannon, and has met with Sheriff Gary Betancourt for a temporary solution for a place for their office. And that would be in the middle room there downstairs of the Bronquist. If you need to expedite that quickly, we could utilize the same format of contract that you already have for the front office space. And that would help you take action immediately. We could, there's other options. We can go ahead and allow that and ratify contract language to follow, I guess, but just going out of an idea there that could be workable. And then the court would take action on that contract as well at a future meeting. If, I guess, I guess I need to say whatever right now during this portion. So that at least introduces a workable partnership there that helped transition the sheriff's office and have a facility in Arlington. Thank you.
Thanks, Jed. I'm also texting, I just texted Gary to see if he can join us in a little bit. So we can talk, dig into a little bit more of that shortly, but thank you. Okay, any other public comments? Again, for folks, you can drop your name in the chat, raise your hand. It doesn't look like there's a big queue. So if you want to just unmute yourself at the moment, you could do that as well. I just want to give folks an opportunity to speak, and then we'll move through the agenda. Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised, so we will, I think, go ahead and proceed with the agenda. Next up is the consent agenda. Commissioners, as you saw, there was a revised agenda that went out. In that revised agenda, I pulled the appointment to the budget committee because we actually had somebody, a second person put their name in after the packet was released. And so I'm just going to pull that back and then we'll take that up again during the February 7 meeting. We'll do that and the comp board appointment. And then I've also added to, this was to the revised agenda that went out on Monday. The first one is the professional services agreement with Catalyst Public Policy Advisors. That is Nick Green, who we discussed during the last meeting for assisting us with our broadband technical assistance program grant, which is due here in early February. And then also Commissioner Shannon had requested that we add the road use agreement with Leaning Juniper in preparation for the repower that they have planned here shortly. So that is the revised consent agenda. Are there any questions on it?
I don't have any.
No.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it. It's been moved and seconded that we approved the consent agenda, which consists of consider approval of October 18, 2023 joint work session minutes. Consider approval of November 1, 2023 regular meeting minutes. Consider approval of November 16, 2023 special meeting minutes. Consider approval of emergency management performance grant number 23-510 with Oregon Department of Emergency Management. Consider appointment of Marta Michaelow to Gillum County Planning Commission effective January 17, 2024 through December 31, 2027. Consider appointment of Robin Ordway, Kathy Stenett, and Kayla Roush to as pro temp justice court judges effective January 17, 2024 through May 31, 2024. Consider approval of professional services agreement with Catalyst Public Policy Advisors for Broadband Technical Assistance Program or VTAP grant application. And consider approval of Gillum County Road Use Agreement with Leaning Juniper Wind Power to LLC. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I, any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are going to move right along into unfinished business. 5.1 is an update on community counseling solutions from Kimberly Lindsay. And is Kimberly in there with you, Pat?
She just stepped out, but Matt's gonna go get her.
Okay, we're going to pause while we wait for Kimberly to join us shortly and give us an update.
Here she comes.
That consent agenda is tricky. It always looks like it's going to take longer than it does.
She's going to come around here next to me.
Okay. Take it away, Kimberly.
Hello. I can't see them. So, yeah, we were on the road before we learned that it went to virtual. So I didn't, I made copies like I usually do of what it was going to speak to. You don't have those. So I asked Commissioner Shannon if he could bring these up to you, and I can also send them electronically, you and both Commissioner Watkins and Judge Farrar. So I don't know that we'll have much discussion today because it's, you don't have some of the documents in front of you. I'll just tell you what I was going to show you. This document is our quarterly report on how we did. And you're used to seeing these. It includes all the counties. And happy to say that Um, and happy to say that the, um, people from Gillum County that participated in the survey, it looks like there were, um, about 20. Again, a voluntary survey in the last two weeks. And, um, everyone was happy with services except one person. Um, was not happy around the length of time it took to get into services. But otherwise, uh, everything else is strongly agree. And the one comment said, "One of the best or best things I've done was coming here to CCS." So, uh, I'll send this with Commissioner Shannon. I can also send it electronically if you like. Um, I made several copies. There's those. I don't think that when I met with you last, that I had shared the results of the 100 Best Nonprofit Survey. So it, it looks like this. It's about 60 pages long. Um, we participate in this survey annually. It's done by the Oregon Business Magazine. Um, and a lot of nonprofits participate in it, not all. They had, uh, almost 400 nonprofits participate in it this year from Oregon. And we were in the top 100, 2009, 10, 11, and 12. But then we didn't make it for years and I had pretty much just given up. The employees determine whether or not you make it or not. You're ranked on about 40 different things. And so, but the feedback that you get is good and we would use the feedback, uh, for our strategic planning. Anyways, we participated this year and we made it. Um, and so the first page says, "Congratulations, you are among, uh, the top 100 best non or nonprofits in Oregon." Um, and so they had a big reveal in October. There was a splash in their magazine. We were sent a lot of plaques, um, that went into all of our offices. And, um, like when I send emails, my signature line includes the ranking of top 100 for 2023. There's a lot of really good feedback in here. We do, we will be using this for strategic planning. There's, um, comments at the end, uh, both good and bad on what people like and dislike. So I'll send this with Commissioner Shannon. Um, and if, uh, if you have any questions or comments after you have a chance to like, take a look at it, please do let me know. We were very excited to make it. So there's those. There is one piece of business that I was going to ask the court to engage in this morning or, um, at least review, but I'm guessing you might need to table it. Back in 2017, at the end of the biennial session, maybe it was 2016, Senate Bill 561 was passed and it required all local mental health authorities, which, um, are county commissioners to, um, have a policy that, um, that basically is a plan for how they will address, um, how they will provide post-vention efforts to a youth's family that dies by suicide. Uh, in this case, youth was defined as 24 years of age and, and younger. And family is very liberal. Family is the family, the school, the peers. Um, immediate community that's impacted by this death. So I asked the commissioners back in October of 2017 if they would like for their community mental health program to draft a plan for them. And they did. You did. And, um, you voted to approve and did it, and did approve this, um, Senate Bill 561 Communication and Response Protocol. So that exists somewhere in your minutes. Um, and we have been following it. So what it says, Senate Bill 561 says that, um, this plan, uh, the entities need to meet within three days. The entities, um, are defined by statute, but it is, in this case, the Gillum County Sheriff's Office. At the time, the Condon Police Department, Gillum County Medical Examiner, um, Arlington School District, Condon School District, CCS, child welfare, if relevant, and then, and then identifying a county post-vention response lead. The group meets, um, discusses what needs to happen to support impacted individuals. And, um, we come up with a short, intermediate, and a long-term plan. So the good news is that there's not been a, a youth that meets this criteria, 24 and under. Um, that hasn't happened. So we haven't needed to activate the Gillum County Youth Suicide Response Team. But Gary and I, um, have been in contact over the years about this plan. The Gillum County Sheriff's Office is the lead. Um, and I feel pretty good that if something did happen, that we would be following this plan. We've, um, sent it in annually to the state so that the county is in compliance. This last legislative session, the state passed House Bill 2395, which added on to Senate Bill 561. And what it says is that the county local mental health authority needs to develop an overdose communication and response protocol, also for youth. Um, so if a youth, uh, intentionally overdoses on a medication or unintentionally overdoses on a medication, including, um, illegal drugs, then this youth, youth response team would activate. And the thoughts around it are that, um, you know, the community is impacted when a youth dies. Uh, and so this is not, of course, all deaths, but it is expanding it from just suicide to include overdose. So I made an assumption that the county would want CCS to update their protocol. Um, and we did update the protocol. So it's, it's here. The yellow highlighting is the updated language. Um, there's not a law. It just says that if there's a youth, uh, youth death due to overdose, that we would activate the team. We did add, this does look like a law on one of the pages. We, um, we basically added the reporting requirements that have already existed in the form that we send into the state. We just added that so that it's clear to see what the, what those reporting requirements are. And like the, the person's name that died, the date of birth, date of death, suspected manner of death. Um, and then just for reference, the form that we send into the state, it's two or three pages. It's also included in this packet. So you won't be able to review it and approve it today because I'm just verbally talking about it. But wondering if you might be able to add this to an agenda in the next week or two or three. Um, and if you had any questions, let me know or I can join by video. Um, if that would be helpful. The state would like us to submit the updated plan. I can't remember what the timeframe is. It might be the end of February. So we were on track to do that, probably still are on track to do that. Just, um, do need your seal of approval. On that.
Does the response team need to be updated?
I, um, they've never met. They did, they will get the updated protocol, but it's Gary who is the one that activates it. Oh, but I see, yeah, taking off the content PD. Yes, thank you. Yeah, got it. Yes, I can remove the content PD.
Since we don't have one.
Since you don't have one, yeah.
Questions for Kimberly? Kimberly, I think we could add, we actually have a special meeting scheduled for next week to take up the broadband, um, application and get that submitted. So if commissioners, if you don't have any objections to that, we could just add that to the agenda, uh, as well when we meet for the broadband discussion.
Yeah, I would assume you would want her to go ahead and email at least this out so you'd have it in front of you before.
Yes, please. And then I'll, uh, distribute it as part of the packet. Um.
I'm not sure when I'll get this stuff up. There would be the concern.
Yeah, if she can email, that would be ideal.
I'll send the, I'll just email the, the three documents. Um, but Commissioner Shannon will have hard copy.
Thank you so much. Uh, question for Kimberly?
I have a couple more things to
Oh.
over to.
Go ahead.
Go over. And so just a couple of quick updates on, um, internal matters. So the Arlington position, the outpatient position, we continue to advertise. It continues to not be filled. Um, I think I heard that they do have interviews, an interview scheduled. So that's exciting. Um, there is a an individual that currently works for us that lives in Gillum County who is interested in doing some pieces of Mary Helen's position for clinical supervision. So we're very excited about that. Um, it's, it's a possibility that that will work. We'll need to make some adjustments. But it would be nice for that supervision to be local. Um, we haven't made any offers and we're still looking at the, um, job description. So nothing formal on that yet, but hopeful that that will work. Um, and then I wanted to update on the, uh, contract. I was just visiting with Nathan about this earlier. So there's what we call the master contract to the financial aid, financial assistance agreement. It is, it's, um, it's the contract that governs what the community mental health program does. Well, and it governs the county and then the county subcontracts, in this case with CCS. Years ago, you formally authorized me to be your, um, at your designee. Um, I signed some volunteer paperwork. You gave me a county email address. You might recall that. So I signed your contracts and I also signed the amendments. Um, there was a lot of concern around this contract that the state sent out. Um, at least when it was in its draft form about eight months ago, there's been, um, a significant amount of discussion and the, the county slash CMHPs are in a place where they're comfortable signing this. We do still feel that the county does have more risk than what they should, especially around tort claims. Um, and somebody that gets released to a county on a PSRB, the state, um, recently put together a, a pool of funds, $2 million to assist with defense or a claim. But really, it's, um, it continues to be problematic because it's a state decision to discharge somebody, but the county is responsible, not just the CMHP. It's the county that's responsible if somebody on a PSRB does something bad and, um, and and family wants to sue, right or wrong. I mean, that'll all get taken care of in the courts, but there's defense and a host of things that come into play. Um, and it's the county's responsibility. So there was a $2 million fund put together. State said, "That's the best we're gonna be able to do right now." Um, $2 million, as you know, doesn't go very far. Like it's for the whole state. So, um, anyways, uh, those updated contracts are coming out and, um, we'll be signing that and the county will get a copy of that. You get a copy of all amendments. We send those in. Um, and it's a, in this case, it's a one and a half year contract. It's January 1 through, uh, of 2024 through June of 2025. So, um, any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. Um, and then last but not least, property. Um, so we, uh, after our last meeting, my last time I met with you, we did put an earnest money agreement, uh, together for a piece of property here in Arlington. Um, you've probably been following this discussion. There were several contingencies for that earnest money agreement. Um, one was home inspection, one was community meeting, one was board approval. Um, we did go and we went door to door after we signed it. We got some feedback there. That was good. We got both positive and negative feedback and then a lot of indifferent, um, or in some cases, people weren't there. From there, we did schedule a community meeting and concurrently, we're also getting the home inspection done. And, um, we were gonna, we were hoping to do the community meeting in December, but it was difficult to find a date that worked with all of the different entities. Uh, we thought we'd found one, but then we learned that it was the, uh, school Christmas concert date. So we decided to push it back until the beginning of January. It was scheduled for January 9th. Um, we also, uh, though, or during that time, we received the home inspection report back. And there were, uh, there were some things that were not significant, some that were moderately significant, and a few that were significant. Um, and one of our board members was working closely with a contractor. They gave the information to the contractor. Um, the contractor put together a list of their thoughts and concerns. So we, um, went back to the realtor and basically said, "We need to cancel this earnest money agreement because the, the repair estimates were coming in at just over 100,000." Or we can, um, we can modify, yeah, we need to cancel it and we're willing to make a new offer for a reduced amount. And they were not able to accept the offer. So, um, we, that was the end of the discussion. The repairs, a couple of the repairs were safety issues and just had to be made. So just when you were gonna spend that much money, the question became, you could probably build a house. Um, if we were gonna buy it for the amount and then we had another $100,000 in repairs, could probably build a house that for, for 425,000. Um, so there was a little frustration with the realtor. Um, and I don't know about the homeowner, probably because of the length of time. And we do feel badly, but I don't, I don't have any control over the holidays and, um, so anyways, that's how that ended. There was good discussion on Facebook. Um, robust discussion. I think there was some misinformation. Um, some correct information and, uh, and then good information or good thoughts for moving forward. Um, our experience has been that we haven't found a way to bring a discussion like this before the public that is right every time. So sometimes folks have been upset that they, like the immediate landowners, they, they're upset that they weren't notified first before they just hear about a community meeting. Um, sometimes folks have been upset that you, um, have the community meeting and you don't do other notifications. Um, we've also sent out things in the mail and sometimes that's well received. Sometimes it isn't well received. Guess what I'm wanting to say is that, you know, we desire to engage in a process that is perfect and we haven't found that yet. There's a lot of literature out there on how to have these conversations. Um, and they also say that what works one place doesn't work in another. So, um, we, yeah, our intent is never to upset. And so we try. Uh, there's been two pieces of property that have been There's been two pieces of property that have been referenced as possible options or alternatives. So I think right now we're just regrouping and of course, any, we can do an earnest money agreement, but like before, all those conversations need to go before the board. So Matt and I will be taking a look at the two different options that we've learned about. And seeing if they're going to fit for the criteria and also the feedback that we received and then possibly do another earnest money agreement. So I didn't miss anything, Matt. Matt Bergstrom, our COO is with me, but you can't see him. We made the drive up from Hepner, but didn't know that it had switched to virtual. So roads were okay. I didn't miss anything.
Thank you.
So one thing I would note, Kimberly, is if you guys end up needing to go down a route where you're building new, CCS's status as a nonprofit, I think would make you eligible to potentially submit an application from the county for, we, we fund housing projects or parts of housing projects. So that may be something, if you end up needing to go down that route where there isn't a suitable existing structure and you want to think about developing housing. That's something that you may want to consider as well. Because we do, specifically, we've targeted our competitive grants program the last year and, and then probably going into this year as well to address housing as one of the primary things that we fund. So I just wanted to kind of plant that seed as you're looking at options that, that may, that may be also an option if you're looking not just for this, but also for options for your own staff as well. If you're having issues with, if housing is a barrier to recruitment for, for instance, at Arlington position that seems so hard to fill, that we are, we funded, the school district has been pursuing that for its teachers. And then I think the 911 board and I think the school district and Condon are also going to be looking at doing similar things because housing is such a barrier to recruitment as well. So just something to maybe think about strategically. That that may be a, a funding source potentially for this and or for workforce related housing for your team.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And if we do go down that path, who do we contact in the county about learning more, to learn more?
So Rachel Boyer, who's our finance director, is taking the lead on that. And I'm happy to connect the two of you.
That would be great. I am writing her name down.
Great. She's on too. So she's, she's listening and I'm sure probably making a note to call. Rachel, this is Kimberly Lindsay with Community Counseling Solutions. So.
Thank you. I was gonna say that, that's all that I had.
I would just like to say how lucky we are to have Kimberly at the head of our mental health, that she's so respected around the state. It's amazing. Been on several presentations she's done and just, we're really, really lucky.
Thank you. I love working in Gillum County.
I concur. You're well respected, Kimberly. You, you come up in, in multiple meetings and all good stuff.
Good.
Any questions for Kimberly? All right, commissioners. Thanks for making the drive, Kimberly, and we'll see you in about three months.
All right. Sounds good. I'll email the documents to you.
Perfect.
I've got a note here that I believe it's Danny Newell could not get logged in and is on a speaker phone, I believe, and would like to do public comment. I don't know where any of that is. You'd have to request in the other room, but I do have a note that he was unable to log in and would like to do public comment on the speaker phone.
Is he in the Arlington room or is he on? Denny, are you in the Arlington room? Are you, did you dial in on your phone?
Go ahead and speak, Danny.
Okay, this is Danny Newell, by law.
Can you hear him?
If he could step closer to the mic, that would be great.
Not sure which mic it is. If it's a screen, let's try this. Go ahead and speak, Danny, and try. Can you hear?
We can hear, but it's at least pretty quiet. It's not as loud as you, Chris. So I'm wondering if maybe he could either or
We're gonna try this. I got the phone right up to the big screen speaker.
Okay.
Speak loud, Jimmy.
Just to share, somebody was speaking about a subject prior to my coming, being able to speak. And I would share with you that I couldn't hear one tenth of what the lady had to say. So I think this, this door swings both ways. Can you hear me sufficiently?
I can, yes.
Okay. So we have heard each of you at different times and in different ways among the distrust, the divisiveness, discord, dissatisfaction, discontent prevalent in Gillum County. We've heard court members call the situation a crisis. At this point, it makes little difference to me whether this court inherited the crisis or caused it. Although I suspect the latter. What matters is that you have acknowledged the mess and are solely responsible for getting us back on track. That's part of the job you ran for. And it is our rightful expectation here, now. Dodging the bullet only adds to the pain. Best in hope in an administrator and kicking this nest down the road until June and beyond is not doing their job. I implore you to do your job. Do it now. Don't let this nest be your legacy. As presented, the process you're proposing places pivotal responsibility in a lame duck judge that should not be. It hamstrings a court of which she will have no part. It obligates one and possibly two new court members to actions they may vehemently oppose. It is a deep infringement upon the new court. I have some specific suggestions regarding your proposed actions. Some of them are nitpicky and some are consequential. But I think none of them are more important than getting the job done, cleaning up the mess. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Let's move on. We are on to 5.2, which is discussion and possible action regarding revised county administrator hiring procedures, draft county administrator profile, position description and salary schedule. So I will
Can we take a quick break?
Yes, it is 11:13. We'll just go ahead and take, can we come convene back at 11:20? Which is about six minutes.
Yes.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, we are back. It is 11:20 and I will go ahead and bring us back into session. We were on 5.2, which is discussion and possible action regarding revised county administrator hiring procedures and draft county administrator profile, position description and salary. Just as a brief recap, back on January 3rd, when the court met in Condon, we adopted hiring procedures which outline the process and timeline for the creation of recruiting and hiring for a new full-time county administrator position. You'll recall back in, during that meeting that I told you that there is a specific process laid out in statute for, which allows the county court to meet an executive session in order to interview candidates in, in executive session. And so we are following that process. And so there's a couple of potential decision points before you today. The first one is after our meeting on the 3rd, I spent some more time thinking about the timeline that we had adopted in the hiring procedures. I put forward on, in your packet, a revised document. It primarily is revising the, the actual process and the timeline for that process. In part because what I realized is I think it would be very beneficial for whoever the new administrator is, to have an opportunity to be here during budget season and make sure that they, since that is a significant part of what we do for the court is making strategic investments in county operations and also in the broader community. Having them be able to participate in that, I think would be of value. While, while I'm here and I've had multiple budgets under my belt, obviously. And so, and then as Denise noted in her, in her public comments, I did tweak the language a bit on the hiring committee rather than naming specific individuals. I obviously would be open if the committee or if the county wanted to specifically say seven people. That's fine. I was just basically giving us a little bit of flexibility if for some reason somebody can't attend or, you know, we're short somebody. So anyway, the intent would be that we would be making those appointments for the other four participants during an upcoming court meeting before the interviews are scheduled to take place. So ideally sometime before February 21st, which is our target day for interviews. So we could potentially be appointing maybe during the February 7th meeting possibly. So other than that, it was just basically adjusting the dates throughout. I did put some placeholder language into the job announcement. Again, this is all subject to the county court signing off on the job description and obviously the salary schedule. This is, and although you can't see it in the PDF, in the original documents, I put notes in them basically just saying that these are obviously subject to change once the court makes formal decisions on, on these items. Let me think if there's anything else, or maybe I'll just open it up to questions at this point.
I would think we would, I, I want to leave the interview committee at 7:00. So the question recruits 7:00. The one thing I'm gonna, I just gonna say it. I, I feel like I'm not gonna say a lot today because I've done a lot of talking in the last two months in these meetings and it appears to be not taken seriously or not listened to very close a lot of the time. I, I don't get a lot of feedback on what my concerns are. And I, I've been in a, my career has been in management since I was 20 years old. And I've managed departments and businesses and states in different places during my career. And I've made every mistake in the book. Hopefully I've learned from them. But most of the, most of my career I've spent in management positions where I was placed to fix things that were problematic. Departments that were problematic or companies that need to get from the red to the black and implementing maintenance programs where none existed. And so it, it was always starting and spending time trying to find where you're at. Listening to everything, gathering information for a pretty good period of time and then coming back with a solution and and I've been very successful at that in a lot of areas from here to Oklahoma and back. And it's taken me a while to figure out where the problems are in, in the structure. And I've talked about a lot of the structure we're now under. And and, and this is a problem. And I'm looking for a long-term solution, not a short-term. My mind about even a discussion around the interim is that's not an effective way to manage, period. It, it's to even consider that's a lack of understanding of the whole situation that we're in. It's a complete lack of understanding of, of what's causing it. And it's, you know, we're talking about an unneeded extending a, a long-term disruption for employees and our staff, which just does not need to happen. We need to put stability into place. And I don't, you know, I really don't care who the judge is now in the past. I mean, Laura Pryor was a part-time judge. So that's how she came on board. She kind of changed the system while she was there, but I guess, I guess my point is, is that I've made it several times that having the administrative functions, control of staff under the judge's position, as I've seen lately called the CEO of the county, is problematic. And it's really problematic for the other two commissioners. And I've been in one of those commissioners now for three years. And I have no desire to serve in that structure one more day if I don't have to. So, I mean, I don't, I'm, I'm not out here campaigning for whatever. I'm, I'm here to work hard for results. If that's not good enough for the public, I can't help it, but I cannot sit in, in what's going on and what I've come to the conclusion is the root cause of where we're at today. We wouldn't be in this situation today if, if I didn't, if, you know, I firmly believe it's because of the structure we're in. And it will not stop here if we continue operating under a county court as we have in the past, which is antiquated, was set in place for a whole different reason. And it's just gonna pop up again in another, another time, another place. The tools are there to be used while campaigning to cause disruption. And I cannot support any part of that. So I'm, for moving forward, I do, I didn't write down some other, Denise's other concerns on the job description. I hope you did, Liz, and we can make sure that, I mean, other than the interim part of that, I have no interest in talking about. Make sure that, that the, the other concerns you had, we do address them. I don't remember them in detail, thanks to my 70-year-old mind, but that's kind of where I am today. I mean, I, we've made this decision. I believe it's the best long-term decision for Gillum County and I'm not going to waver off of that. And I intend to be here next year. And I don't want to work under what I've been working under. So I've heard for, I don't know how long, the judge has got too much power and is paid too much. We go fix it and now we shouldn't be fixing it because we're going to get a different personality and we don't even know that yet. So it's not about the person, that personality for me, as I said a month or so ago, this is about principles. And, and I live on the principles and try to stay out of the personality as much as possible. So I'm, I'm, I'm gonna walk out of this job someday knowing I did the best I could possibly do for Gillum County and feel really good about it. And I've been really, really, I'm satisfied with the work that we've accomplished in the last year, year and a half. As we've kind of gelled here. So we've had a really good team and it, it's just been a real pleasure doing it. Probably one of the highlights of my life. And so right now I'm not in a highlight of my life. Kind of the battle. I'm in a box. And as I told to somebody last night, this is a no-win situation for me. I get that. But I still gonna do the next right thing. Thanks.
Yeah, I can speak to a couple of things that were raised. I think there was a question about involving legal counsel. Normally we do not involve Normally, we do not involve legal counsel in our hiring procedures, but because we are using a specific statute related to the executive session, we use legal counsel in that case because, because this is a unique hiring situation where the court's going to be needing an executive session. And I, I just want to make sure that we are not inadvertently violating public meeting law by, by not handling the process appropriately. And so that's why we involve legal counsel in this particular hire. In general, we usually don't because usually the full county court is not meeting to interview candidates together. So wanted to address that. In terms of the at-will versus contract situation, historically, employees who are not represented have been at-will. Will obviously be up to the court to determine if that will be the status in this particular hire. I'm not making any judgments on that in the actual procedures. That would be up to the county court to decide once they have selected, once the hiring committee has selected a candidate and and we're negotiating towards an agreement. I'm trying to think of what else was in here regarding the questions that are asked. As standard practice, we do have a list of questions that are developed ahead of time. The hiring committee really is advised not to deviate too much from those questions in order to make sure that every candidate has a, an equal playing field and that we are able to score those answers consistently because we need to score and also make sure that we're accounting appropriately for any folks who are in the hiring pool that are veterans. And so that's that question. However, what I think what tends to happen during interviews is that candidates may say something that prompts a committee member to ask or dive a little bit deeper and ask for more information related to an answer that a candidate is given, has given, and that is certainly allowed to sort of probe or clarify things that applicants are conveying during an interview. I think that may be, oh, and there was a question about providing the questions ahead of time. In some cases, the county has given some questions to all candidates. We would never give questions to only a portion of the candidates. So if the hiring committee determines that it would like to share the questions ahead of time, they would be done so with all candidates to ensure that all candidates have an equal playing field during their interviews. So sometimes we do that so that folks, we can see how folks prepare for a meeting rather than putting them on the spot. Sometimes it's helpful to see whether people will actually take the time, the extra day or two to be thoughtful about their answers, potentially do research, things like that to sort of show that to the hiring committees. So again, that will be up to the hiring committee to decide those details. It's not something that is spelled out in the hiring procedures specifically at this point so that the hiring committee itself can provide that feedback collectively. And I think those are all the questions related specifically to the hiring procedures. I think once we move into the actual administrator profile and the position description, we can kind of tackle some of those. But I think maybe just focusing for now on the hiring procedures. And really, I think the question, and I'll also open it up to you as well, Leah, if you've got comments. I did want to note, though, I do think it's really important that when you're considering a government structure. I mean, I've been here, I'm starting my sixth and final year, and I have worked with now three different combinations of commissioners since I took office in that timeframe. And so I would just point out that like the personalities on this court historically change with time, and that's, that's a normal part of the process. I think the important thing for any court is to be making sure that the actual government structure works regardless of who's sitting in these chairs. And I think we would be doing the public a disservice to assume that there will be certain personalities coming in in January and that therefore we should have a different county structure because of who may be in the chairs in January. A part of what provides the stability for our staff, who are the ones who are really doing the on-the-ground work day to day means having, I think, more certainty about how that structure looks so that their bosses, right now, their bosses change every two years, basically, or have. And I think providing a structure that provides some stability amongst that natural change that needs to happen on a governing body, and that is the public's right to do over time to change their elected officials. The county still needs to run day to day. And I think having, what, what I have seen is it is a huge learning curve for the commissioners. They have talked about that before. If you take the learning curve from the, for the judge, you can probably multiply the commissioner's learning curve by 10. So I just think by having some stability on the administrative side of things, that means that whoever is sitting in my chair, and, you know, I, I'm not making any statements on that. Whoever wants it and and the public puts in there, that's great, that's democracy. But the government structure shouldn't be changed based on who is sitting in my chair. It, it needs to work regardless of which three people are serving on the county court at any given time. And as well as for the employees who are working day to day, regardless of who's sitting on the county court. So that, that's why I have felt that this needed to happen really from the very first year that I took office. And I am happy to support moving it forward if that's the will of the county court. So Leah, do you have any comments or feedback?
Okay, I got unmuted, I think. Can you hear me? Um, I don't know where the actually word interim come from. That was never part of the discussion at our last meeting. I don't think it's going to benefit us to put somebody into a spot they're only going to be in six months. I don't know how that would even be beneficial to the county in the long run. And we're, we're after the stability. And I just have to comment, I find it highly ironic now that Chris Patino thinks that having a executive assistant would be a good idea when that apparently wasn't a good idea earlier. So I just think we need to move forward with administrator. And I will comment that Laura Pryor was not a full-time judge when she first came. She, she transitioned it into a full-time judge. So that's all I got to say for right now. I'm ready to move on.
I, I do have some concerns on the compensation and limiting ourselves with too low of wage scale. I know when, when this first came up, this was suggested in this building a month or so ago. And I believe the wage from the public that came out was somewhere between 140 and 190,000 or something. And I don't think we necessarily have to go there, but I am concerned that we have our top in to where we're gonna really limit the applicants that we might get. This is a big job.
So what I would say is if we would like, I think what we, if, if you guys would like to move forward with approving or adopting the revised hiring procedures with the amendments that we discussed, which were suggested by Denise, which would be on page one, basically striking the five dash and then striking the up to four. So we would leave the four in place, but strike the up to, basically confirming that it would be a, a committee of seven. Then that allows us then to move into considering and adopting the administrator profile, the position description, and, and then settling on what a salary schedule should look like. So if that, if you guys are open to that, then I would be looking for a motion just to adopt the revised hiring procedures as amended. And then we could move on to the next sort of procedure in the, in the list.
I would move to adopt the hiring procedures as amended.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I keep trying to go to my picture and not the bottom. I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the hiring revised hiring procedures as amended. These, for the record, are for the county administrator. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion passes. So then, next step is to actually look at the the profile that was part of the packet. So this is another step in the process that's required of us by statute. So in addition to having the actual position description, we have to pass an administrator profile, which lays out the standards, criteria, and policy directives for this position and individual. So basically what you'll see in here, to be honest, a lot of this was actually developed when we were looking at the chief of staff position under a different county court, some five years ago now. But a lot of this is also borrowed from other county administrator position descriptions and position announcements that we have found and, and it has been provided from other counties. So you can, obviously you can look through those and let me know if there's anything in there that you have concerns about. But as you see, like, sort of big thing, big picture tasks are looking at at budget and finance, personnel and human resources, not just managing folks in the day-to-day, but also making sure that we're in compliance with, that we are in compliance with labor laws and making sure that we are following all of those procedures appropriately. Community relations, which means really, I think, doing a lot of the, this is something as well that the, you know, the county court, I think, will continue to do a lot of. But there are a lot of inquiries that come in from community partners pursuing different projects. And so part of the role envisioned is that the administrator is going to be at the table along with county court members. So when the county court is giving a directive that we want to help move a project forward or partner with somebody, that administrator is going to be at the table helping to make that, that vision happen. County court relations is obviously a big one, really facilitating a lot of the stuff that I am doing now. So, you know, agenda planning, making sure that everything that comes before us on, on the agenda has gone through legal counsel review if appropriate, all the other reviews that we do. Just making sure that, that those things are ready for prime time. And so, yeah, I think those, that pretty much covers that. In addition, be a partner on economic development-related things, government relations, meaning that they have, that they are participating with other county administrators to stay in the loop about things that are happening at the legislature and other places so that the county is ahead of the ball, basically, when laws are changing and things that affect administration are happening. And then really just working to make sure that, that, that the court's initiatives and goals are moving forward, that there's somebody making sure that those things are, are proceeding at an appropriate pace. So that's kind of the high level. There was a question in the chat about what would be different from this position than the chief of of staff position that didn't work and why it didn't work. And I think what I would say to that is, number one, I think the biggest, the biggest difference between what's being considered here and what was being considered during the chief of staff discussion was that it was still very, it was not clear, and the county court at that time was not prepared to fully empower the administrator to handle administrative things. And so I was still full-time, which means that there was some confusion among staff and other people about who, who was actually in charge in the building. And that particular court at the time, I think, was not, I think, not prepared to move to the structure that this court is currently discussing. And I would, I would say that is the primary thing that the chief of staff who was hired, I don't think was ever fully empowered by that court to take on the administrative roles that I think this court is contemplating. And I think that's the biggest difference was that that created confusion for staff, other elected officials, and the public about who was actually responsible for which decisions. Okay, so that is a preview of the profile. Any questions about the profile itself?
No.
And then as an attachment to the profile is the actual job description or draft of it, which you will see is, is in our format. So we'll be very familiar. I will tell you that this particular position description is, with some exceptions, very close to what Wasco County uses for their administrator. So I didn't really reinvent the wheel, other than I specifically called out the personnel policies and really being sort of the lead person with collective bargaining and also dealing with our union. So I'm not sure how they handle it in other counties. I also specifically called out risk, risk mitigation, which is a big part of sort of anticipating the things that we potentially should be improving to avoid risk. And so I called that out as well. There was a question regarding the motor vehicle and the performance of duties. That is standard language that we use for, for personnel who are, in general, going to be traveling. And so the expectation is that with the county court that ping-pongs between Arlington and Condon, for instance, every month between our meetings, the administrator likely will be in a vehicle doing that as well as, you know, attending other meetings outside of the county, other things. Legally, we need to have that language in there so that we can check to ensure that the individual does have a license. However, to Denise's point about disability that we are required for all of our employees, that if somebody has a disability and asks for an accommodation, if it is under certain parameters, we are required by law to, to meet those needs so that people who have a disability are, and would otherwise be able to perform the duties, are able to be considered and employed in that position. So we would, if we had a successful applicant that was disabled, then we would be required under a separate disability law to provide accommodation, appropriate accommodation, to make that work for that individual. So that is why we put that in there. The other question related to hybrid eligible, we have that in general for folks who are able to work remotely. That may include working while they are away at a conference. That may mean that they are able to, for instance, answer emails and things after hours on weekends. It may mean that if they have a kid homesick and they are asking, wanting to flex time or put a few hours in while their kids are homesick, that they're able to do so, and that is pretty standard. Nearly all of Billam County's, at least courthouse employees are hybrid eligible to be able to do that. Obviously, our road department and some other folks that need to physically be present to, to Um, obviously our road department and some other folks that need to physically be present, uh, to, to work, uh, don't have that option, but for just about every other employee who, uh, works in an office setting, uh, they have that, uh, ability under county policy. And that I think is all I have on those two pieces. Are there questions about either of those things?
So I do have a question about the driver's license. Um, does it just need to be a current driver's license? Say, what if they were a candidate out of the state of Washington? Like, I think Denise.
So when we've had, when we've had those before, in general, what we do, we do this as well sometimes with CDLs, um, is we, uh, say that they need to have, uh, have it within six months when they get here in the actual document that we sign with them. So if we have a candidate that comes in that doesn't need that qualification on the first day, uh, we give them a little bit of grace to get that. And, and obviously if somebody was moving in from out of state, uh, there would be a, a period of time where they would be transitioning all of their DMV records and things over to the state. So we would expect that and can accommodate that in the actual onboarding process and recruitment, the end of the recruitment. So it does not preclude for somebody from applying. Uh, it would just mean once they assume the position that they need to have that pretty quickly after they actually are, uh, in the job.
So, so I'd like to see in the job description or, um, some language that this position, they are expected to be in the courthouse during open hours, except under, you know, special circumstances. I mean, I, I don't want anything out there that this is come in at nine or 10 because you feel like it, this, this person needs to be there when the staff's there.
Got it. Um, so I think that can be, um, I don't know, look at this. I, I'm just looking for a place to maybe add that.
I'd think if we could put it even under the examples of duties, that it was an expectation that some, you know, some language in there maybe.
So, um, okay, so in the position description, it says on page two, it says provides oversight and direction to appointed department heads. So why don't we, um, add on to that and say, uh, let's see, is?
Expected.
Just working on language. Give me one second.
You know, there would be an expectation from me that they were easy to get a hold of and I knew where they were at.
Yeah. Okay, so what if we added, I'm looking at the one, two, third bullet point down on page two of the position description, where it says provides oversight and direction to appointed department heads. Then we would add a sentence in between those two that before it goes on to develops performance expectations. What if we said is expected to be present in the courthouse during business hours?
Yes.
Does that work? Leah, does that work for you? You're muted.
Yeah, but do we need to leave language except for when they're like, expected to be at meetings or otherwise? Because obviously if we're in Arlington, during a county court meeting, they're not going to be in that.
Yeah, they're going to be in Arlington.
Yeah. So do we need to make sure we leave a little bit? I mean, I, I understand Pat's concern that they're, they're in the courthouse and available, but I can see the situations when that's not always going to be the case.
I, um, okay, let me think about this in the courthouse during business hours.
Maybe you say, um, except when required to attend meetings in person, it's along those lines.
Or even, uh, whenever their, their expected duties require them to be otherwise, not available in the courthouse, but something to that point.
Except when. Okay, give me a second. I'm going to mute you guys for just a second while I talk this through out loud to myself. So how about this? Um, again, uh, third pair, or third bullet point, page two. We would add the sentence is expected to be present in the courthouse during business hours, except when traveling for county business.
That works for me.
Okay. Leah, you good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, are, are there, were there any other questions, concerns?
No, I thought the rest of it was really good.
Why, thank you. So if you guys would like to proceed, because we've adopted the hiring procedures, um, which allow us to move forward with approving this today. If you guys would like to do that today, um, then there's a sample motion in there. In the sample motion, it would basically be directing us to incorporate these documents into the revised hiring procedures that we just, um, that we just approved. So, um, if there's interest in doing that today, or it can be held over if you would like to do that, just let me know.
I move to approve the Gillum County Administrator Profile and Position Description as amended and to incorporate both as attachments A and A1 in the current hiring procedures.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the Gillum County Administrator Profile and Position Description as amended and to incorporate both as attachments A and A1 in the current hiring procedures. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so the third piece of this, in order for us to get, uh, something advertised and begin recruitment, uh, we need some direction on the pay scale. Um, so what you see is a couple of things. There's, um, there is a proposed pay scale, which basically just assumes, um, that it would be similar to the current county judge pay scale. Uh, so bottom at eighty-nine and change and then, or excuse me, yeah, eighty-nine and change and then top in at one oh six, um, and change. Uh, I will note on there for those who are confused, um, that the elected officials' pay schedule is a, uh, shorter step schedule. Um, it moves up every year and there's fewer steps. Um, and the, uh, non-represented pay schedule, uh, uh, salary schedule is a ten-year and has additional steps. So that's why that looks a little different between, uh, the county judge's current, uh, salary schedule and what would be proposed here. You can also see Miranda, um, asked for other counties to provide what their county administrators are making. Um, Union County, uh, is at the bottom. Uh, they're paying, uh, right now about eighty-three for starting. Um, and then you'll see it go up from there. Um, Wasco County, obviously up into the one forties. You get into the big counties, Marion and Multnomah and others. Uh, you're talking closer to probably two hundred, uh, for those counties. So that just gives you kind of a different range, um, to look at. I did, for those who are commenting on the budgetary impact of the county administrator position, this is obviously not a binding document. The Budget Committee will write the budget in future years. It was, uh, merely meant to illustrate, um, what it looks like by shifting, um, the pay, the compensation for the county judge, if that is reduced, um, which again is a decision the county court uh, will make, uh, uh, in consultation with the Budget Committee and the Compensation Board. Um, but it's just basically showing, uh, projected costs for that administration, um, which, um, depending on what the decision is on this actual salary schedule will, um, obviously be adjusted accordingly. So, um, commissioners, what are your thoughts on the pay scale?
Well, my, my recommendation, based on, um, the projected budgetary impact, and I don't care where the bottom is, but the tops, we should take them divided by the three years and that thirty-five thousand, just for the purpose. That would be per year, so that we don't miss some potential good applicants.
So, okay, so let me see.
You're, you're projecting a hundred and five thousand dollar three-year savings.
Mm-hmm.
Thirty-five thousand a year.
So the idea would be to take.
It wouldn't affect our, our budget fiscally. I mean, we've covered our costs and what we're doing and then, it would, it would just leave that ceiling high enough that if we have um, somebody or we may not get an applicant because it's too low.
Yeah. So is there a, um, I mean, would you like us to maybe try to match? Let me see.
Deschutes is not bad and that's a sizable county. I'm not, you know, just, just, yeah, and I, and, but I, I'm not sure.
I will say that in reading their position description, although they do cal- call it a county administrator and many of these functions are similar, I got the impression that there may be somebody above this person in Deschutes County's hierarchy. Um,
I would wonder.
Yeah, or exactly what you're saying, because I think their, um, commissioners themselves are making, I think, a hundred and twenty-four or something like that. Um, so I would have expected their administrator to make more. Um, but let me just pull this up real quick. I'm just trying to get it to load. Taking its sweet time today. Um, okay, let me go down to the bottom here. I was printing mine out. It cut off some of the numbers, so I'm going to go find the original documents. Okay, so Pat, you're thinking adding the thirty-five to the top of the pay scale? Is that what you're, what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I'm saying that thirty-five should top the scale out. It gives us some um, flexibility on applicants when they come in and, um, I, you know, I just think we top her, we top out at a hundred and six. We're not going to get what we need.
Okay, so let me, let me do the math on this really quick. Maybe. Bear with me, I'm, I think I'm taxing my internet here, but to be opening all these documents. So based on that, it would be a hundred and six, four thirty-five, plus thirty-five thousand. So they would be topping at one forty-one. Could we just round it? Maybe say one forty?
Yes.
Okay, um, okay, so let me see then.
You'll have to adjust that back down each scale, I guess, to.
Yes. So I am going to attempt to actually do that in real time. So I will hold on one second. I'm going to adjust some stuff and then I'll share my screen and kind of show you what I think we're after. So, um, just if everyone can just hold tight. Folks want to use their bathroom for a few minutes? Um, I'm going to do a little bit of math and then I'll, uh, be back.
So Liz, when, when you calculated these, we're all at the top end of the scale, right? Like when, when we were doing the budget, not necessarily what they're being paid currently, but at the top of the scale.
Yes, that is, that is correct. So what we did with the Budget Committee decided to do last year, um, which was a new thing, was basically when we budget for each of the positions, we budget at the top of the scale. And the reason for that is because we have had, uh, situations where we, um, have turnover mid-year, somebody retires, other, other things. Uh, and, and when we need flexibility for hiring in and being able to hire at a step that's appropriate for the applicant's, uh, prior experience that they're bringing in. And then in addition to that, um, that also for both the Budget Committee and the County Court when they're approving their budget, um, makes it really clear, uh, the actual sort of maximum impact of the salary schedule. So, um, so that we are clear that that top scale, as we have folks, um, stepping into those top scales, that that obviously will impact the budget over time. Um, and so we've made a decision to budget at the top of the range for that purpose so that we are not overpromising based on what our, um, tax base can support.
Okay, thanks. I just want to make sure that was clear because I think people look at that and go, wow, they're making that much and that's not actually what they're making.
Yeah, right. So like, for instance, um, I'll just toss out, uh, for instance, the, on the. for instance, the on the projected um thing uh that like Miranda's position as the Assistant to the Commissioners, that's budgeted at the very top of the scale. I think when she came in, she was um at, you know, the first or second step was where the Commissioners put her. So she's making far below that in actuality, but the budget reflects the maximum cost for the position, not for the particular person who's in that position at any given time. Okay, I'm going to do some math. Um folks, why don't we take just a quick recess for about five minutes or so? And then um so let's let's maybe plan to reconvene about twelve-twenty, which is eight minutes, actually. And then I'm going to do a little bit of math and come back. Okay, and then I am going to share my screen or attempt to. Commissioners, can you see that?
Yeah, it's pretty small, but I can see it.
I don't know.
I see I see it. It's fine. Yep, I'm I'm.
I can see it.
So what you see in there is that I plugged in the numbers in our regular um non-represented salary schedule, which did the math for me. Um so under this scenario, if we wanted the final step, which would be somebody who's served ten-plus years or is coming to us with substantial experience um out, you know, outside of of county experience, um would end up at a hundred and forty thousand, and then the beginning range of the salary would be a hundred and seventeen and change based on the um predetermined calculations that we have for steps um for non-represented employees.
Well, I think that's more realistic to getting the type of an applicant we need.
Leah, what do you think?
Yeah, I agree. Um. Will you will you send this out to us after you get it all done?
Yes, yeah, I can. Uh my, I think I don't know, maybe people are on the internet for lunchtime, but um in Condon, anyway, my internet's a little slow right now. Um but yes, I will email this out to you guys after we jump off the um jump off the call.
Okay.
So if you guys felt like this is where you want the position to be, then I would need a motion to approve this salary schedule as amended, um since we made some changes to it. And then um and then we would need to basically direct the staff to then incorporate it into this larger salary schedule that we have for our non-represented employees.
Okay, I move to approve the salary schedule for the county administrator as amended and to direct staff to incorporate the position into the salary schedule for the non-represented employees.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve the salary schedule for the county administrator as amended and to direct staff to incorporate the position into the salary schedule for non-represented employees. Is there further discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we will, um per the hiring procedures, uh Miranda and I will get started getting this posted everywhere uh that we possibly can. In addition, uh obviously, if folks who are listening know of some potential candidates who might be a good fit, please make sure uh to direct them to the county's website and we'll have the application materials and the um and the job announcement listed. Um I'm hope I'm hoping I can actually get some of that started uh today. So uh we'll get moving on that as soon as we can. Um Miranda is out uh for a day or two, so it may be early next week before we officially release it, but I'm going to try to release as much as I can um uh this week without her help. Okay, I'm going to stop sharing. Go back to just normal. Okay, um we're moving on to new business, which is six point one, Discussion Regarding Inflation Reduction Act Direct Pay Program for Electric Vehicles Charging Stations. Um Pat, do you want to take this or would you like me to kick it off?
Yeah, I'll just start, but you can you can take. I'm not sure where what we're going to what we're going to do here, obviously. Um some of it's preliminary, it looks like, when I look through the document, but um what steps would we need to take? I think that Catherine kind of reached out to me and and I looked at it in more detail, and I think that um the um conversation we had recently about putting in a charging station up by the courthouse or possibly out the bus barn or something might fall under this to to um get some assistance. I think it's on in the chart under section thirty-C, Alternative Fuel Vehicle Refilling Property Credit. So it's a tax credit situation, but thought we better take a look at it, see if that might not fit. I I'm not sure if I mean, I budgeting wise, I guess, making the departments aware that if we do something along uh um electric vehicles, there's some tax credit and stuff there that we could look at, but wanted to get it out on at least the radar screen. You can take it from there. Are you frozen, Liz?
I might be. Uh, one sec.
Yeah, she looks she looks frozen.
She looks mad.
Maybe not. So I I guess I read this and I was like I was like, it did it just have to do with direct pay from the government into any of these and setting that up? So.
Yeah, I'm not. I mean, I'm not sure. I just know that there's some tax credit benefits. This came from Cath- Kathy Kathleen Cathy the other day from Wyden's Office. Uh update on um you know, some potential um assistance we can get.
So is it setting up the the direct pay then if we file for any of these programs and that's how we would receive the money? Is that?
Liz?
I think that's correct. Yeah. So I think we would um probably Rachel and I would just dig into how to do that.
Okay.
Um and then, yes, as we have projects that fit, um then we would be pursuing, I think, both the section thirty-C and then also uh to Pat's point, uh as folks are changing out. Um maybe considering some uh some clean vehicles and recouping some of the cost.
No, I just wanted to get it out here so we could talk about it.
Okay. I'm actually, I think what I'm going to do on my end is just stop my video, and I'm hoping that will give me and so that I'm not um creating freezes and things like that. We'll see if that actually helps us wrap up. Give me one second.
That's not fair. I want to go to the no picture, too.
Well, it's not ideal, but I think this might be better to at least hear me than see my frozen face online. So um let's move on. We added to the agenda um a discussion with Sheriff Betancourt about the situation in um with the office in Arlington, and I understand that he is sitting in with the group in Arlington. So Gary, are you there?
I am here.
Great. Do you want to give us an update on sort of what happened and then what you're thinking in terms of next steps?
Yeah, well, hopefully you uh agree with my next step uh because we're I see our office furniture coming through the hallway here, so. But uh regardless, uh they're kind of noisy. Uh December, I guess, Christmas Eve, twenty twenty-two, we had a water leak in our current office, which is owned by the City of Arlington. And that took till May to to fix with fans and construction and all kinds of stuff going on. And this leak that happened Monday night is much worse. Both bathroom ceilings collapsed. Uh the water ran in there for about six hours before it was discovered. So uh to me and doing my walkthrough, it's uninhabitable. So uh I know that Leah, Shannon, and Jed um have had discussion along with uh at least Judge Farrar uh in regards to a temporary site for our office being here at the Grand Quest Building in the smaller uh space. So if we want to have that discussion, then we can move on to a longer-term solution.
Yes, so I'm thinking uh to Jed's uh comments earlier that we, I I mean, obviously, you're moving forward with that. And so Jed, uh maybe you and I can just work together and we can formally get the lease agreement on the court's agenda either next week, if we can turn it around that quickly, or on February seventh. But I'm guessing the cost is going to be well below procurement level, and so it will just that piece itself would be fine under procurement law. It's just the actual lease agreement that we would need to get tidied up.
I know, you're cold.
I'm cold.
I'm expecting this temporary, what we're calling temporary, is going to be six months to a year, depending on what our long-term solution ends up being.
Want to dive into the long-term solution, Gary?
Sure. Uh so I've come up with three uh possible. I have not been able to meet with.
Gary for a minute.
Sure.
Rachel Weinstein looks like she needs to mute. There's a whole bunch of background, and I cannot hear Gary very well.
Sorry, but it's not. Rachel, you need to mute, please.
Uh I'll go ahead, I guess.
Yep, go ahead, Gary.
Anyway, I haven't uh been able to meet with the city, and I have requested a meeting. And that hasn't happened yet, but uh so we have the discussion with the port about building a building. And the plans and everything are already there on that. Another discussion we had with the port is this larger meeting room here at the Grand Quest Building, which, you know, would meet our needs except for uh our storage uh needs for emergency equipment and uh vehicles and search warrant-type stuff. The other solution is the North Fire District has offered their old fire station, which is a six-bay uh building with an office space. However, I think in its current condition, it's not uh conducive to us moving in there. What they have suggested is, is if the county would pay for construction costs of retrofitting that building to meet our needs, that they would allow us to occupy that building rent-free. No specified amount of time uh with that, so further discussion would need to be there. What I was going to talk to the City of Arlington about uh was if they will pretty much gut the our existing office space and rebuild it to our specific design uh so the office portion would would fit us. That, you know, I would be willing to go back there, but that would be at city cost, and we would have to expect, obviously, that our rent would go up monthly. Well, those are my options. But obviously, the county, you guys need to be involved in this decision because it's going to cost us more money uh in the end, and so it's kind of your decision and uh whomever we choose to work with.
So I have a question, Gary. Would the the Fire Services Building, is that something that would you would seriously consider if it was remodeled? Or, I mean, how I would like, I'm interested in your feelings, actually.
Yeah, so I talked to Chief Clatten, uh and he's on here as well. Uh that's six bays. He would need to keep two of those bays for the Fire Services needs. That leaves four bays open uh available for us. And I would think that we would use uh extend the office out one or two bays uh for our office space and then leaving us two bays for equipment, storage, emergency supplies. Uh and then give us space to do vehicle search warrants and things like that. So the the space is there.
I think it would be doing a comparison. I mean, wh- which would you like? Which would you prefer? And then, obviously, you have to figure out where you're at with the city, obviously, but um doing a cost comparison versus, you know, so we have the options and we could consider the different options from the fiscal side.
Yeah, my first option is the the Fire District's building. Uh that's more conducive to what our needs are, and everything's right there. It'd all be under one roof, which is really nice. Uh but the more expensive option than possibly the city if, but I don't, I haven't had discussion with the city, so I don't know if they are even uh onboard with rebuilding the in interior of the current space, which in my mind would be the county's cheapest option. Um and then, obviously, the most expensive would uh a whole new facility. So my preference is the Fire District's uh existing building.
Well, even if you went with that, we're looking at a new building, that would be something that'd be down the road, you know, obviously.
Oh, yeah. I mean, obviously, there's grants would be needed and whatnot, and I mean, I I'm thinking a minimum of two years on that. Uh the Fire District Building, you know, we could be a year out, maybe less. I know that it would just depend on um, you know, getting a uh blueprints of what we need and and then getting a contractor on that end of things.
Yeah. Wonder, I do you have any idea what you might be looking at for remodel on that Fire Services? I just have to get somebody to come in there and look, then.
Yeah, we would need a design first, obviously. I don't think there's much engineering needs, but uh there is a mezzanine up above the office space where we would put our our uh emergency supplies, so they would be up above and out of the vehicle parking area. So there might be some um I guess structural stuff there, interior, but the building itself wouldn't wouldn't change.
So one uh I was going to say, one small update um is I did look into, because AOC right now is in the process of sorting through the courthouse funds um that the legislature provides uh during the long session. And um it does not appear that this particular project will work for that because there needs to be a direct tie with Circuit Court facilities. So I just wanted to flag that I did pursue that, but unfortunately, I don't think that's going to be a viable funding option um for whatever direction we go in. Um so but there may be other grants. That was just the first one that we looked at. I think there's also a community um a community facilities grant that we pursued for. A community facilities grant that we pursued for actually the Liberty Theater um, that came out of our congressional delegation. And so that may also be another, it's not a lot of money, about a, I think quarter of a million is about where it caps out out, but that might also be. Uh, something that we could use toward a, a facility.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I think of these things in simpler terms than what uh, you three need to think of things, but uh, you know, over. How many years of, you know, rent at fifteen hundred, two thousand dollars a month, you know, how long will it? So that's kind of how I look at it, just paying rent forward basically, but that's obviously your guys' call.
I mean, for me, I, I actually like the idea of upgrading an existing facility and then long-term having that be. Something that is very affordable for the sheriff's office down the road, you know, like uh, because I think it's a. One, it's, I think it's an important investment when we have empty buildings to make sure that they're still standing and usable. Um. And if it fits your needs, uh, that seems to be the way to go.
I agree completely.
And this is, this is Joe Clotten. Um, I did speak with the, uh, chairman of our board and I, and we're, we're all in agreement that. It just benefits us as well rather than the building just said. It's quickest way to, for a building to deteriorate if nobody's in it. So. I kind of a benefit to all, I think. And we're not out to make money or just uh, need somebody in that building. And I think it just worked great while I was right here.
Right. So commissioners, I think if this sounds like the direction you'd like to go in, I think the next step would be. Probably for Gary and I to work together and I don't know if you want us to loop in Jeff Shot or somebody else. But I think we're going to need obviously an engineer or architect looking at it to figure out with Gary what changes need to be made. And then that will help us get our heads around how much we think an upgrade of that building will cost and can kind of move forward. Um, based on that. But I would just need direction on if, if there's consensus you'd like us to move forward. Then we need to come back probably with a project manager and or engineer uh, to uh, with a contract so that we can actually get some drawings. And some cost estimates to move forward.
I, I would like to move forward with that concept and, and as far as Jeff, I think it's a workload deal, you know, you don't want to wait forever to get. At least the preliminary information where we're at with costs and stuff. So um. You know, can you get that on his priority or, or is it going to be six months before he can do something? And he's busy all the time, so I don't know.
I would throw out there if I may that uh, Vernon Gray. Has already worked uh, with us on what our needs are. Um, so he already has that uh, going. He obviously hasn't looked at this building, so.
Yeah, that's a good point, good point.
Uh, Jed is also wanting to chime in, so go ahead Jed uh, as well.
Yeah, this is Jed with the port. Uh, we, we worked with Gary in. Creating a potential. Uh, new building, construction, and we had burn gray, great some design. We invested, I think it was about eleven thousand dollars into that design of a facility that would be located. Between Watco Building and Gronkis. You know, that, that was a little bit proactive and forward-thinking for a potential new facility. I realize if, if there's a, if there's a better option for the fire station building, I don't want to stand in the way of that. But just to be on the record too of the investment the court made with. An understanding, hopefully that the county would be supportive of that long-range uh. Solution for a, a new structure. But just uh, just to have that as part of the discussion as well, please.
So I'm thinking for next steps, one, um, did we? I don't recall if we've discussed making the port hole for that work, but I feel like that's appropriate for us to do that as part. You know, like that's part of our due diligence is to figure out different options. And so I don't want the port to be out funds because we're. Figuring out what's going to work best for the situation. So one, I would suggest that we figure out how to address that and make the port whole.
I, I would agree with that. And I mean, we could do that in a number of ways, whether it's, you know, in advance immediately to cover costs or whether it's just being. Um, available for the next ask and helping them out where we need to.
Yeah, I will say I, I don't think it's effort wasted that, you know, it was visionary to try and plan for the future. But we're up against that uh, getting, you know, chasing down the grant funding. All of the uh, administration of building and building. As well, and, and you'll, you'll have those same challenges with updating the fire station building or another building, but. Good to get started and happy to help with this, this temporary. Uh, room available in the meantime.
So commissioners, if there is consensus with, Jed, did you say it was about eleven thousand that you have outlaid already?
I think that was the amount that we paid to Vernon Gray.
Okay.
Somewhere in that ballpark.
So commissioners, under our procurement policies, we actually don't, that's a small enough amount, believe it or not, in procurement world. Um, that we actually don't have to um. I could approve that if there's consensus of the court uh, that you would like Gillon County to go ahead and pick up those costs. We would just have the court invoice us for that amount because I really, they're going to be searching for other grants and things and having that cash on hand as match. I think would be, even though it's a small, relatively small amount, having that available to them might be helpful.
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Leah, you good with that too?
Yep.
Okay. So Jed, I'll uh, coordinate with you, but basically we'll just need an invoice to reimburse you guys for that. And then we can. That way you've got some cash sitting there that can be used for other projects. And then on the other, um, the, the larger discussion, I think then next steps is uh, Gary, I'm happy to work with you and we can contact Vernon. And see if he can give us an amount and depending, um, commissioners, depending on the amount he comes back with. If it's a small enough amount underneath the procurement, do you want it to come back to you or do you want me to just move forward with Gary and approve it?
I think we just need to move forward if it's small enough amount where at least that's where I'm at. There's no point stalling or waiting. We've got to do something.
Yeah, I, I agree. We, we can't, we've, we've got to have a place for them to land.
Okay, so we'll get started on that and I'll get um, I'll get in touch with Vernon or maybe Gary, you can if you want. Um, and we'll get back an amount and get that moving um, so that we can start getting cost estimates and. And figure out next steps. Who knows? We might get lucky and even this time next year have uh, everybody in there, uh, which would be nice.
I hope so. Another thing that we need to do is obviously uh, coordinate with uh. Fire District, North Fire District and, and uh, meet with them at some point. And I, they have a meeting, Joe, second Monday of February?
You just.
I think he left.
Yeah, he just put a note in that said that he had to go, um, but email if, if there were questions.
I was just, just getting ready to walk out the door, but yes, it's the second, second Monday at six o'clock PM.
Okay. I better write that down this time.
Okay, now I'm leaving.
Okay, so it sounds like we've got a path forward on this and we will, Jed did write before and said we can turn that contract around quickly. So. Uh, if I can, I will try to put it on this special meeting agenda for next week. So we can get that buttoned up. And uh, all the paperwork in, in order.
Okay, I will call Vernon then, Judge.
Perfect. Thanks, Gary. Um, okay, uh, anything else on that one?
Nope.
Okay, uh, last but not least, uh, we added a discussion regarding uh, emergency funding. For some broken pipes in Arlington. Pat, do you want to elaborate on?
Yeah, I don't have a lot of information. I got a request from April yesterday that um, the help Arlington funding is running out. And she was concerned with the water problems that the city has had recently, which I think they got turned back on last night that they're. And with warmer weather coming, we might end up with some residents in an emergency situation with broken pipes and um. Uh, just what could we do to backfill funding for help so they can stay on top of that? Be, be somewhat pride. Didn't want to wait for two weeks to, you know, what, what are they going to do with broken pipes for two weeks while we're waiting for another meeting?
Um, let's see. Well.
I don't remember, Liz, I don't remember how much we give them for that program or whatever. And I don't have any numbers. I mean, we know, I don't know. How much they've got left or if we've got any requests in. I don't have any information.
Yeah, so I think uh, we give both ends a think ten grand. Um, and. Uh, that would be, that would go out on the fiscal year. So they're well into, I am. Confident they are well into that. Um.
Yeah, and I, and she did mention too that, you know, even the food pantry in Arlington might be in a similar situation. And I don't know if anybody up there's heard of anything, but. If, if we could at least, um, okay, if the requests come through, you know, maybe an additional five or 10 or something. And um, so that we could get it to them. In the emergency situation, they might find themselves in and, and be able to help the residents.
So I feel confident that we did not expend all of the special projects grant money at the north end. And so how about this? If there's consensus of the court, um, that, we could count that as a special project grant. And if you guys direct me as those applications or outreach come in. To just go ahead and meet those needs and we could pay for it out of the special projects amount if that, uh, or grant for the north end if that works. For you guys.
Should we put a ceiling on it so that it doesn't so?
If you would like to, uh, the ceiling right now on capital-related projects is thirty thousand. Um, and then for special, you know, visionary product, projects, it's like uh, twenty. I would have to double check with Rachel on how much is actually left in that account because we obviously did fund some grants uh, in the. In the spring cycle. So I'm not sure how much is available.
I'm just trying to figure out from a process side, how does that work? They come in with an request and does that have to come back in front of the court? To approve that request? What, what's the process there? I mean, that's normal, is what we do.
Yeah, I mean, normally we would, it would go through a grant review cycle and it would come to us on a regular agenda. But if you guys want to move forward with just pre-approving those requests. Or if they can get it to us before the special meeting next week, we could put that on the agenda for next week. Um. So we could do either, we could do either way. You could either just pre-approve it and then as they come in, uh.
Let's put it on the agenda for next week and I'll reach out to April and see if she can find out where it's at. And then, um, in fact, I think she's on here.
I think she is.
See if we can get some, you know, see what the situation is. We don't even know what the situation is right now.
Perfect. And that was.
What situation is for sure. I just had um, some people come to me that uh, knows that there's going to be some issues. And I know that part of help was um. People are coming off the freeway that are stopped because, you know, because they were after they had accidents. So I just figured the money might go be fast. Uh, so I can talk here to Kellin and may see if she can get um. Some ideas of, of issues that people are having.
That would be helpful.
Yeah.
Then if we could get that for next week's meeting, we can go ahead and add it to that agenda.
Yeah.
So who are those folks supposed to reach out to first? You know, if they have broken pipes.
On this end, it's Carrie, obviously.
Mm-hmm. And, and Condon, uh, I think Pat Miss Boney said the food pantry. Will be um, the other people, but maybe Sabrina might have um. So I is, so, but need some help up there. There, no, if there isn't for frozen pipes or whatever, um. Um, no, not having any water. I had trickle, I was a. There's other people that have any water running through their pipes at all. Um, there were issues. Know that um, thousands in Villar Park have gotten down to even with, even Peter Ryan.
I don't know how much of that you're getting, but it's a cutout deal for me.
Yeah, me too. How about we, April, if we can just plan on you connecting with Commissioner Shannon and then uh. I, I'm going to be putting together the agenda for next week because it needs to actually go out tomorrow. And so I will just put a placeholder on it. And if we need to pull it, if, if, if there's not a need or it's something else, we can uh, we can adjust it or we can pull it off. That way it'll be properly noticed.
Perfect.
Okay, um, let me see. I think that is it for our uh, normal agenda. So we will move into announcements and next meeting. So as we've been indicating, we are going to be holding a special meeting. Uh, next week on the twenty-fourth. That one will be at three o'clock PM uh, because I have an all-day early learning council meeting again. Um, and the primary focus of that will be talking with Nick Green uh, who we just approved a contract with to help. Uh, submit the BTAP uh, application. And then we'll add these other things on as well. Um. Commissioners, question for you. Do you want that meeting to be in person or would you like to do that over Zoom?
Hmm, I guess it doesn't matter to me. Whatever is most convenient for everybody else.
It sounds like the weather is supposed to be bad.
Again.
Next week. So, and now that I know where to go to get on.
We will, we will fix uh, the problem that we're having with Zoom. Uh, I will spend some time figuring that out today. So um, let's for, let's plan on that. I, I think it will be a, hopefully a pretty short meeting. Um, so it's just going to be the, the release uh, with the port, the BTAP. And then um, and then this issue that was just raised about uh, emergency funding. So I, I'm thinking it, it may not be worth the drive in the crummy weather um, to have us schlepping back and forth. So let's just plan on holding that uh, via Zoom only. Um, and then we'll get out a robot, a, a new agenda. Uh, and public notice for that um, shortly. And Pat, what are you working on?
Um, first thing, I just got a back an email from Tyler with Avangrid and he would like to get a executed copy of the road use agreement as soon as possible. Not sure who's going to do that with our staff shortages, but.
Um, I have an electronic version, so I will, you sign it and get it over to him probably this afternoon. I've got a couple of meetings I need to go to first. And then I'll start wrapping up stuff, so.
And then I guess on the other side is a shorts, preparation for the short session started in the last couple of weeks and uh. Um, attended some meetings on Friday, AOC committee meetings on Friday, the fifth, and was in Salem on the eighth. For a number of meetings, including the legislative committee meeting, um, Korea meeting last Friday. And the Eastern Oregon caucus call yesterday morning. And then Narcore's board meeting is tomorrow. So that's kind of where I'm at for right now. That'll also be in Salem on the twenty-second for the fourth. Health and Human Services Summit meeting in addressing ballot measure one-ten, which I also asked. Um. Them on the caucus call to get that on their agenda so we can find out where the counties are on the east side of the state and what they're thinking of. And what they're thinking about that ballot measure and fixes or repeal or what's going on. I'm not hearing much from the. East side and I'd kind of like to know what, what, um. What's going on outside of the, um, work that AOC is doing.
Sounds good. What do you think that's going to end up at?
Well, there'll be some, and there's some fixes, but they don't want to talk about decriminalization, which is troubling. And then the governor. Terminated the director of Oregon Recovers, who I've been on the phone with several times and, um. It looks to me like she's let the alcohol and restaurant industry weigh in on her decision, which is not helpful to recovery. So I don't know. It's a mess.
Hmm. Uh, Leah, what do you have?
So on January ninth, uh, Deline Wilson and Lisa. Helms and I sat, met with, uh, I'm probably going to butcher this lady's name. It was Tony, um, Sil Bergnagle. Anyway, she was a, she is a fiscal analyst for OHA and we reviewed. About revising the cost allocations on the program elements. So. We're getting geared up to start working on the second quarter report for twenty three. Or so. And that is due the end of January. So, and everything is going well at Public Health. So.
Yay, great news.
Thankful for that. And otherwise I've been trying to stay off the slick weather and out of the snow. But I do have a question. So the Fair Board, the, is getting, uh, request from. Pillar Consulting from, I think, one of their bookkeepers. Um, on probably a W nine, I think, didn't all the payments go through the county?
Yes.
So I just need to maybe forward her to Rachel to get that information from Rachel that she'll need.
Yeah. Cause I'm, I don't have the budget in front of me, but I am pretty sure that we kept the capital, uh. Project specifically in the budget in Gillum County's budget, so we can track it.
Yeah. And I, I think all the monies and, and expenditure are going through the county.
I so too. Yeah. Yeah.
And other than that, I guess I will see you guys next week.
Yay. Um, so for me, let's see, I wanted to just. Just confirm with you guys, is there an airplane nearby? What's happening? Um, so you guys probably saw that Michelle sent us a notice to public agency regarding waste management's. Um. Application related to their renewable natural gas. I know Pat, that you have a conflict. So I'll just say that for the record, but I wanted to a- assume. Leah, that we are not planning on submitting, you would not like us to submit, uh. Comments for that planning action. We don't have to. I just need to let Michelle know. That we're not planning on submitting comments.
Okay.
And if you're okay with that.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll just let her know. We don't actually have to do any action. I just, I was making the assumption we weren't going to, and I wanted to confirm that. Um. Let's see, for me. Um. Let's see, I was also in Salem. The week of the eighth, uh, for AOC meetings and then also talking to legislators about a number of issues. Um, there's some interesting legislation moving forward, uh, some PERS reform, I think, coming. Um, I did get, interestingly enough, some questions about double dipping for elected officials. And, um, so I'd be curious to see if, uh, some of those legislature legislators tackle. Rolling back some of that. Um, there's only a handful of county commissioner or county, excuse me, county elected official. Uh, positions that are allowed to double dip. And so I found that was kind of an interesting. Um, the county judge is one of them. Obviously I think the county commissioners and I think the sheriff are and nobody else is. So. Uh, there was some questions about, uh, that since I am a county judge and, uh, it'll be interesting to see. I know the driving impetus is, has to do with the DAs and whether they're classified as, um. As, uh, law enforcement, uh, PERS or not, um, but there are some other discussions about some of the other double dipping. So it'll be interesting to see what the legislature, what comes out of the legislature, either in the short session or in the longer session. Um, and other than that, uh, just had some really good meetings around early learning stuff. I did have a couple of conversations, uh, related to clarifying the probate clause. Um, that has been brought up obviously in previous meetings. I don't have anything updated on that yet. Uh, if I do, I obviously will bring it back to the court and let you know what's happening. Um. And let's see, other than that, uh. There is, there was a, uh, nine-one-one board meeting on the ninth, um. And things, uh, Jessica Lynch, who's the, um, the director there did have a, a. Very good report on staffing levels that they are beginning to come back up. So that was very good news. Um, she feels like they're in a much better position between. Some new hires that they've brought on and some long-term contractors that are going to get them through. While they're continuing to recruit, they are still recruiting. So if somebody knows of somebody out there who might be interested in that kind of work. Um, they should be reaching out directly to Jessica, um, for an application. And the other thing which will be coming before the court, uh, probably I'm hoping sometime in February, but. Uh, the nine-one-one board is moving forward in a partnership with PCDC to develop housing. On the old football or old baseball field in Condon, um, for dispatchers. So, um, I think PCDC will have a grant application into us. Uh, for the competitive grants to help pick up some of the costs for that. Um, but the board, the nine-one-one board has signed off on moving forward with that project. Uh, so that we have, um, space, one, for the contractors who are coming in from other communities and staying long weekends or, you know. And then also as a recruiting tool, um, as they're hiring more dispatchers. So that will be coming, um. To a future county court meeting. And. Other than that, let me just see if there's anything else I wanted to note. Um. Early learning stuff is moving full steam of ahead. Um, the contractors are moving ahead. Um, the abatement and demolition. Phase was wrapped last week and so they have been busy framing in, um. The court in, in particular has. Walls going up and all kinds of stuff already. So that's great. Um, I think they're still on schedule. We did have a little issue with the very cold weather about, uh, the bathrooms freezing outside temporarily. Um, but the contractors were able to get that resolved. So they're, um, they're still working. And, um, otherwise I think we're pretty much on schedule and on budget, uh, by and large, there was a small. Um, uh, change that I approved, uh. Which basically at the end, the county court and the original plans, we're going to have, uh, tile. In the hallways that was going to have to be matched and it was a tricky match. We can't, we actually can't find that tile made anywhere else. And so, uh, the contractor suggested we look at maybe just doing all carpeting at that end of the courthouse. And so I went ahead and signed off on that. One, because the tile is, um. Really slippery when it's wet anyway. And so we have people occasionally fall in. Two, I just think from a cost perspective, it was probably going to be easier than trying, than needing to rip out and or match tile. Um, so there was just that small change and otherwise, uh, things are going smoothly, I think. So. Um, that's all I have, uh, from me. Um, anything else for the good of the order? If not, it is. Ooh, if not, it is one oh nine and I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Goodbye.
Bye.